Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Orange Board of Education Public School District Board Meeting, February the 28th, 2024. Can I get a roll call, Mr. Ballot?
Show Kim, Madam President. Can you turn me up a little bit, guys? Check, check. Ms. Crackett?
Here.
Mr. Tarver?
Present.
Mr. Wingfield?
I am here.
Vice President Gravesandee?
Here.
Board President Johnson?
Present.
Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Mr. Ballot?
In conformance with the Board of Education Policy 0162 and the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, this is to announce that this open public board meeting of the Orange Board of Education is being convened with adequate notice. Notice of this meeting has been posted at the Administrative Office, filed with the City Clerk's Office of the City of Orange Township, and delivered to the Orange Transcript and the Star Ledger. The City of Orange Township Board of Education encourages participation and input from members of the public at its board meetings. However, in accordance with board policy, verbal attacks against individual staff members or members of the board are not permitted. Persons are encouraged to address the board regarding the comments related to agenda items or items or issues concerning the educational process. Public comments are limited to one per attendee for a maximum duration of three minutes. Please be advised, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Internet. The Board of Education thanks you for your cooperation. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President?
Thank you. We will now... Can I get a motion to go into an executive session?
I will.
There's been a motion to go into executive session, and it's been properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried.
Thank you. We will recess until 6:45, but no later than 7:30. Thank you all. 4:51, the Orange Board of Education Public Meetings, February 28th, 2024. Can I get a motion to go into open?
I move. There's been a motion by Mr. Wingfield, and property seconded by Board Member Graves... I'm sorry, Vice President Gravesandee, to go back into open session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried.
We will now hear from our student representative, Tito.
See, I can give him your mic. Give him your mic.
Okay. Before my speech, I wanted to start off by talking about one of the experiences that I had over the break.
Okay.
I got the opportunity to join a student leadership conference in Long Branch, New Jersey, and speak with other students and hear other speakers, and it was really inspiring. And I just, you know, hope for the chance for other students to be able to participate in something like that, since I was like the first person from Orange High to be able to experience that. So I hope in the future, next year, we can bring more students to that program.
Your wishes all come in.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you had a restful break. As I address you today, I'd like to delve into a topic that has been on my mind lately. In a recent conversation I had with a member of Orange High School community, the subject of lunch arose naturally. This conversation sparked an idea that perhaps there are actionable measures that we could take to better grasp the perspectives of our students. As a result, I initiated a survey initiative, which garnered an overwhelming 300-plus responses from our student body. I am enthusiastic about presenting the insights from these responses in our upcoming board meeting. Moreover, while the lunch survey will be discussed at the next meeting through Google Slides, it's crucial to acknowledge that there are broader issues demanding our attention. I am driven by a sense of duty to advocate for our students and affect tangible change where it is most warranted. During our discussions, the topic of homelessness among our student body emerged as a significant concern. Rather than just acknowledging this issue, I am dedicated to presenting practical solutions. Through collaborative brainstorming sessions, I have identified various approaches to offer assistance to students experiencing housing insecurities. Here are some potential strategies. Establishing a support program. Create a dedicated support program tailored to the needs of homeless students, offering resources such as counseling, academic support, and assistance with basic needs. Second, designating a liaison. Appoint a staff member or a team as a liaison for homeless students, serving as a point of contact and coordinating support services. Third, providing access to basic needs, ensuring homeless students have access to essential resources like food, clothing, hygiene products, and school supplies through initiatives such as food pantries, clothing vouchers, or donation drives. Fourth, comprehensive needs assessment, conducting a thorough need assessment to identify students who may be experiencing homelessness. This assessment should include surveys, interviews, and discussions with students, families, teachers, and school staff to gather information about housing instability and other related challenges. By implementing these strategies and fostering a supportive environment, we can make significant strides in addressing the needs of our homeless student population. As a school district, our job is to take a chance on every single student and provide them with the opportunity they need to make their dreams become a reality. Thank you for your attention.
Tito, I look forward in working with you on this because that is true. There are a lot of our children that are homeless, and we have to do better as a school district, so thank you. We will hear from Dr. Fitzhugh.
Thank you, Doc. Tito, very well stated, and I just want to say to you that we do have supports. And so I just wanted to give the community as well as the board an idea of what those supports are. We are benefiting from American Rescue Plan Homeless and Displaced Youth Grant. So that grant allows us... But even before that grant, we have title funds that help us to provide a homeless liaison, a district homeless liaison, that supports our students that have been identified with housing insecurity. But in addition to that, we have an academic success coach that is specifically designed to work with our homeless and displaced youth that have been identified. So she works in tandem with our district liaison, which is Mrs. Lisa Bosworth-Brown, and the academic success coach is someone you should know, Mrs. Dana Jones at the high school, right? So I would encourage you, any students that you may have come across that have communicated that to you, I'm asking that you reach out to Mrs. Jones. So that we can make sure that Miss Jones is aware of who they are, and if she's not aware of who they are, that she can make sure that they are benefiting from some of those resources. Because sometimes students feel more comfortable talking to their peers versus coming to an adult. So you can serve, you and any of your peers can serve as a bridge, so that we make sure that we don't miss any student. And in terms of any of the resources that they have access to, the grant funding that we currently have allows us to purchase school supplies that they need, allows us to give them mental health supports, to provide food where food is needed, to provide transportation, right? And we are providing those services to those students that we know need them. But if there are more, we definitely can provide for more, and we just need to know who they are. So good on you for acknowledging that that is a concern of your peers. And lastly, not just at the high school, but any students throughout the district, at any of our district schools, if they're experiencing housing insecurity, there are resources here with the district to help, and we can also connect with community resources, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm available to you and anybody else, so that I can ensure that we connect them as well.
Thank you.
Good evening again, everyone.
Good evening.
So to begin, we're going to begin with the scout updates. Just so everyone is aware, every month, we report out on the scholarships. Last month, we had a total of $8.5 million in scholarships. As of Monday, Orange High School is at $7,753,589, and STEM is at $4,383,280. A grand total of $12,136,869. So again, we're only in February, and again, we're going to ensure that we're going to keep that number going up, up, up here in our district. Soon in the month. Are you ready? The month of January. Central Elementary School, Ashley Today. Cleveland Street School, Jaden Garcia. Forest Street Community School, Araya Lambert. Ableton Avenue School, Rodland Paul. Lincoln Avenue School, Colin Benjamin. Oakwood Avenue School, Deanna Quishpe. Orange High School, Leanna Neptune. Orange Peppery Academy of Incrinating Innovation, Oscar Vasquez. Harve Avenue School, Navea Holman. Rosa Parks Community School, Teresa Ecamendia. STEM Innovation Academy of the Oranges, Imalyn Morales. The Twilight Program, Jafir Morris. So I just wanted to say to our students, congratulations to all, and I know we're going to have a different list in the month of February, but we're proud of all of our scholars, both here and beyond this meeting. So one last final round of applause for our scholars. A few points in the year, we typically look at the strategic plan work of our district. And so I just want to remind... I won't read each of the slides, however, I do feel it's important, if you have not had a chance to read Moving Into Greatness, that you do read Moving Into Greatness, right? There's four core focus areas already. And so I just wanted to share with you the overarching core focus areas. So the first is strong home-school-community connection. Establish, communicate, and share vision for family and school engagement by committee of stakeholders led by the school's superintendent. Also revise the framework for parent and family and community engagement in order to increase student and family connectivity to community resources, programs, services, and partnerships. That's exactly what Tito was just speaking about, followed up by Ms. Alcaterra, all righty? So this one is the establishment of the home and school connection. Are we good with that one? All right. Core focus area two, student universal supports. So again, this one looks at developing a district-wide universal learning support system to address barriers to teaching and learning, eliminating the predictivity... I'm sorry, predictability of outcomes for all students based on race, gender, socioeconomic status, learning modalities, language, or social orientation. And again, we want to also make sure that we're taking care of the whole child in this particular core focus area. That's important, isn't it? Right, to take care of the whole child. That's core focus area two. Core focus area three, human capital and job embedded professional development. And again, we want to establish a model to recruit, support, and develop newly hired teachers and staff through coaching, peer collaboration, fellowships, residencies, and mentorships, right? And again, the state of New Jersey requires us to have new teachers with mentors. I think we all know that, right? Right? So we have to make sure that we are following the state guidelines. So this is an example of, right, some of the important pieces when it deals with human capital. Now, Professor Velvys, the next piece. You look at differentiated instructional practices in the classroom, the same for those developmental pieces for instructional staff. Not every person needs the same piece of pizza, right? We want to make sure that folks have what they need predicated on data, right? And so that is the purpose of this modality, all righty? Core focus area three. Core focus area four, this one is rigorous and relevant curricula and instruction. This one looks at to continue to identify, develop, and implement inclusive, evidence-based, and college-career-ready standards aligned pre-K through grade 12. So again, this one is critical because we do a lot of curriculum revisions over the summer. We have curriculum writers in the district, right? And we have to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to the state standards, but also what else? That it is differentiated for the students under our charge, all righty? So when you look at those curriculum pieces online, you will see that you have those important tenets, like the academic frame, you have, you know, systemic frame, right? Humanistic frame, right? Because again, you want to develop the whole child, and also you want to ensure that the whole child has the socio-emotional and the academic supports. Core focus area four. If you look here, the students are in the center of the apex, and all the folks around this circle are supporting our students. So again, we want to ensure that always, more than ever, that we know that those entities around the circle are supporting our students, from the principals, the teachers, and staff, after school programs, community engagement, right? Relationships, resources, transportation, all these entities are going to assist the development of a whole child. With that being said, we're going to have a presentation on special education from our Executive Director of the Office of Special Education and Behavioral Intervention, Mrs. Shelley Harper.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tonight, I will be discussing some following subjects in regards to special education, the core values of special education, the department goals of special education, and special education education law, special education programs by school, and special education core groups. Special education parent advisory group, otherwise known as the CPAG. What is the core values of special education? I'm not going to read everything to you, I'm just going to highlight some areas. Special education is at the core of how schools address the needs of students with disabilities and how they provide support, helping students achieve annual goals outlined in IEP. The IEP is the most important part of the student's trajectory, the map, sort of say, of how we teach our children for students with that special education needs. Department goals? I have to look out here because I can't... So I'll read a few, you can read along with me. Continue to implement and refine the coaching cycle for special education teachers. Enhance and expand applied behavior analysis for our autistic program. Expand on intervention strategies and targeted supports that are specifically aligned to the student's classification and disability. That's important. That's where the differentiation comes out, and that's where it looks different for our students, based on their individual needs. Develop and implement executive functioning skills for students. We have been going around my department and doing professional development for all of the schools, including special education teachers as well as general education teachers. Provide professional development, SEL, specific to standards with disability, students with disabilities. Increase members of the special education parent advisory group. So special education program by school. If you see, this year, we did a restructuring of our school, and you can look at the different schools and the programs that we have. We wanted to make sure that if a student started in kindergarten, that student will be able to go all the way up to the seventh grade. For instance, let's look at Lincoln Avenue School. Lincoln Avenue School has a LLD program from K all the way up to seventh grade. So those students will be able to stay in that particular school and not have to move from school to school. And that was something that the parents brought to my attention, that they needed to happen, because sometimes if this child did not have the program in a particular school that they were going to, we would switch them to the school that they actually have the program. But to cut down and bring more consistency, we reorganized the schools and the departments. Special education department, what does that include? So for the child study team, we have a social worker, a school psychologist, a learning consultant, speech pathologist, occupational therapist, physical therapist, and a BCBA. These are critical members of the team, and also the parents. So under the IDEA, school districts are required to provide a free, appropriate public education, which is called FATE, to every eligible student. FATE means student special education and related services that provide... that are provided to children with disabilities at public expense, under the public supervision and direction, and without charge. So if there's related services needed, it's no charge to the parents and the household. They provide in keeping with the individual education program, IEP, that meets the requirements of IDEA. States must also educate disabled students in the least restricted environment, which means with their peers in a general education classroom to the maximum extent possible. So timeline. So once a parent writes a referral, or the referral comes from the INRS, the team has 20 days of written requests, from the written request of the referral and identification meeting must be held to determine if evaluations are warranted. The entire process will take 90 days if they decide that an evaluation is warranted. This just explains the steps of the process. The IEP team includes the teacher, a special education teacher, a general education teacher, the student if they are over 16 years of age, the parent, the case manager, and any member of the team that will be reporting out from an evaluation. That can include the school psychologist, it can include the learning consultant, or the social worker, a speech pathologist, OT, or PT. Individualized educational plan. To sum it up, it must have annual measurable goals, it must differentiate based on the student's skills and needs, it must include goals and objectives, and the plan shall establish the rationale for the student's educational placement and serve as a basis for program implementation. Okay, prize. When a parent comes to the Department of Special Education each year for any annual review, or reevaluation, or initial, they receive what you call is a prize. This is the parent rights in special education pamphlet. It's a booklet explaining special education, the special education process, and the rights of students and parents. Must be given to parents as listed on the handout. So every meeting, the parent receives this prize. Sometimes they say, well, we have like five of them, I don't need another one, and then they have to sign off saying that they refuse to receive it. Special education parent advisory group. A special education parent advisory group, or CPAG, as I said, is a state mandated, district-level, parent-driven group charged with the providing input to the local school district on system-level of challenges in special education and related services. I'll break it down a little bit for you. So what is the purpose or function of a CPAG group? A CPAG gives parents the opportunity to provide direct input to their school district about policies, programs, practices, and services that have an impact on students with disabilities and their families. And effective CPAG can increase the proactive involvement of families by inviting input that can be used to shape local special education policy. Also, again, I'll reemphasize that our redistricting came from the parents. It helps improve educational outcomes and well-being for all students, including those with disabilities. It helps identify unmet needs, it helps shape the development of programs, services, and policies, and it helps to improve district culture and climate for our students. That's it for me.
Every February is Career and Technical Education Month, and so we just wanted to highlight some of the nuances of this craft at our schools here in the district. So to do this portion of the presentation, we'll be Ms. Alcaterra, Executive Director for the Office of Innovation.
Good evening, everyone. So career and technical education, great programming that's offered here in the Orange Public Schools. So I just want to highlight for you a little bit of what our programs offer. So our CTE programs, just a review of what we have, audiovisual, technology, and film. And for each of our programs, we offer a three-course sequence. So under audiovisual, you'll see the three courses that make up that program, culinary, entrepreneurship, graphic arts, health sciences, and ROTC. The additional courses that you see listed below are not part of an approved program of study, but they are career and technical courses that are offered at the Orange High School. So we have Cisco Networking Academy, Introduction to Graphic Arts, Introduction to Healthcare and Society, and Cosmetology One. As you may be aware, all students who are graduating high school must have five credits in career and technical education, so there are multiple opportunities for our high school students to earn that required five credits towards graduation. And we're proud to say that we have over 675 students that are enrolled in one or more of the courses that you see identified there. So my presentation just has a few visual images to highlight some of the great opportunities that our students have. So in our entrepreneurship program, and before I even go into the programs, I just want to emphasize that for each program, one of our goals is to ensure that students not only have a rich experience at the high school, but they understand the post-secondary opportunities in each program. So that if they choose to pursue postgraduate work, whether that be at college or a technical school and/or the military, because many of these opportunities are available in the military, or they can walk right out of high school with credentials that will allow them to go into the workforce. So those are our goals. So with the entrepreneurship program, you'll see here that on the left-hand side, our students had an opportunity for some job shadowing and mentoring at EY, that's Ernst &amp; Young, at their Island facility. And on the right, those are our women entrepreneurs that were attending the annual Montclair State University Entrepreneurship Conference for Women Entrepreneurs. These images just provide you some experience in terms of the students, again, that are in our entrepreneurship program. They have opportunities to do what I call tabletop exercises, but there are corporations that will, as part of their community service work, engage high school students in exercises that give them hands-on application... um engage high school students in exercises that give them hands-on applications to some of the skills that they're learning in class. So here, they had about two hours to develop a business concept and pitch it to uh uh executives at Morgan Stanley. And the best pitch won. So Morgan Stanley representatives gave them feedback on how um they developed their pitch. And each member of that group had a specific role. So they understood how corporate executives work day-to-day, not individually, but collectively as a team. And so they had that experience, and each year we tried to partner with Suda to give them that experience. So that was entrepreneurship. Let's go to audiovisual. So here on the left-hand side, those are students at Drew University. Our students go there every year in November to create films in twenty-four hours. And so this year, we had six films that were created on the campus of Drew University, one of which was all Spanish with subtitles for us to understand in English. And so uh those students filmed and edited those films in twenty-four hours in collaboration with film students at Drew University. And uh on the right-hand side, we had a red carpet event to celebrate those students right here at Orange High School. And so they received, there was first, second, and third place, and those students, were able to be honored um for their great work. For culinary, our culinary program is one of our longstanding programs at the high school. And so on the left, you see an image of students, and we took them to the restaurant school. It is a post-secondary opportunity that they can potentially experience uh in Philadelphia. So uh they took a uh trip there, they understood uh the admissions process, the costs and any scholarships that would be available to them. The middle picture are some of our culinary students visiting OECD and teaching our preschoolers how to make certain items, and then they got to eat them. And you know, can't leave without having them eat something. And then the last picture are our culinary students at work, putting their skills into practice. Graphic arts. These are posters created by our students using Adobe Photoshop, layer upon layer upon layer. And they are phenomenal. And this is just a small representation of the work that they're doing. We are scheduled to have a CTE health fair next month, if all goes well. And so these students were uh directed as part, they had a project to do. The project was to create the media, the marketing material for this fair. And these are just three samples of the work that they created. Looks professional, right? And these are high school students. These same high school students, again, like I said, every program has a uh opportunity for a college tour. So on the left, they went to Kane. And they visited their graphic arts program there, took a full tour, had an EOF presentation and admission presentation. On the right, they went to the Guggenheim Museum in New York so they could understand the artwork that they're creating in class is artwork that uh artists are making and having presented in the museum, in prominent museums. Health science, because we have students that are aspiring to fields in the health professions, not just medical doctors or nurses, but all of the ancillary services that support them. So on the left-hand side, these are students that use T-shirts and created the anatomy of all the organs, right? A visual representation of what they're learning, so hopefully it helps them to remember what they are learning in class. And on the right are our, some of our eighth-grade students that participated in our CTE middle school exploration program that took place in January, learning how to use some CPR skills and the AED. ROTC, um one of our strong, very strong program at the high school. In the upper-left-hand corner, those are some of our cadets participating in a competition at Linden High School. There are various competitions across the state that our students can participate in. And so this is one of their first opportunities at Linden. The middle picture, uh we had an Air Force recruiter, go Air Force, just had to say. But our Air Force recruiter came in and took them through a uh series of PE exercises that mimics um the yearly, the yearly physical fitness test that students uh that uh military members have to take. And then up in the right-hand corner is our students experiencing flight at iFly. So these are all experiences that our ROTC cadets get.
Ms Alcatera, before you move on, what is next Tuesday at eleven-thirty, March fifth? That's a big deal, so I want you to share it.
Sure, yes, sir. Um so next Tuesday, uh our naval ROTC program will be participating in their annual military inspection, AMI. And so we, every region has a section, uh has a commander that has, from the Navy, that has to come down and inspect the units. And so this is an annual military inspect- inspection. We have a hundred, a hundred and one or a hundred and three cadets. And so this is their, they've been training all year. This is their opportunity to demonstrate the leadership skills that they have developed as well as their military drill and protocol. And um we're hoping that board members, you will be available to come. This is uh student-led. Chief just stands in the background. Everything is student-led. And we get great community support from Orange Police Department, Orange Fire Department, uh City Council Board, everyone. So if you are available to come March fifth, Orange High School auxiliary gym, it is definitely something that you will leave very impressed um by the the leadership of our students. Cisco. Our students have an opportunity to take uh the Cisco Networking Academy curriculum and and if they do well, walk out with a credential. On the left-hand side, that's our very own IT manager, Mr. Cordez, who came in and was served as a guest speaker to these students so that they could see that this is a, this is a trajectory that can lead you to an awesome career. He had students researching professions, the amount of money they could make. And so, you know, they they engaged him, he engaged them in great discussion around this career, which does not require a college education, right? And so they need to understand that there are multiple opportunities, no matter what path you take. And on the right-hand side, that is one of the professors from NJIT. So that the, they, the students have an understanding of some of the computer um programs that are available at NJIT for to for them to major in, one of which that we were focusing on is cybersecurity. And Mr. Jean is a product of NJIT. So it was really nice for him to bring back uh someone from that university. Career and technical student organizations, part of CTE programming, uh as identified by Perkins, is to ensure that our students have opportunities for leadership, and that is through these uh after-school programs. On the top, you will see our officers for our Health Occupation Student Association. Bottom right are our officers for Future Business Leaders of America. And on the left are, is the command structure for ROTC. Another component that's required of CTE programs across the state is that our students need to either earn dual credit enrollment in our programs that are offered and/or an industry-valued credential. So for culinary, our students, if successful, will earn a Serve Safe Food Service Manager certification. Uh for our graphic, for our graphic arts program, if our students are successful in their third course, they do sit a certiport course. And if they are successful, they can leave with an Adobe Photoshop certification. And for our digital media uh programs, students have an opportunity to sit the certification exam for Adobe Premiere Pro. Another component that's required of our CTE programs is to have advisory boards. Those advisory boards must be composed of parents, students, higher education institutions, industry partners, and teachers, as well as guidance and special education representatives. So these are just some of the agencies that serve on our advisory boards, depending upon what their areas of of specialty is. Lot of requirements for CTE. The next one is work-based learning, right? Our students need to have opportunities for internships, apprenticeships, and job shadowing opportunities. In the left-hand corner, that's Cooperman Barnabas Medical Center. Our students for this, were in year two, where they have been going to Cooperman and shadowing right along executives and individuals in professions. So the students just came back in January. They go three days in a month from twelve to four P.M., so they're in the height of the action that's happening at the hospital. Um in this last cohort, one of our students shadowed the CEO. Another one of our students shadowed a uh IT specialist, who now wants to bring him back in the summer as an intern. And we had students in the emergency department pharmacy. Um our entrepreneurship student was in the uh marketing space. And then we're also getting into the diet nutrition culinary. So we have our second cohort of students that will be going up there in March. Oh, and in the middle, that's an OHS tornado, an alumni, Chef Pimpin'. And she comes in and she does demonstrations. She's also um, you know, in the Instagram space, done work with Food Network, Whoopi Goldberg. So she's making her name, and she hasn't forgotten her home. And with uh Mr. Cordez, by him um serving as a guest speaker, that also helps us to meet our work-based learning um requirement. So we do make sure that we get a a number of uh guest speakers in. Our university partnerships, our students in health science earn dual credit with Rutgers. Our students in culinary earn dual credit with Hudson County Community College. Our students in graphic arts, as well as digital media, earn dual credit with Fairleigh Dickinson University. And for accounting, Syracuse, Syracuse. But also entrepreneurship earns dual credit through Fairleigh as well. So we had our first session for the middle school exploration program targeted for grades seven and eight. Our next session will be in April, so please look out for more information. And I did tell you about our digital media students that created a film in twenty-four hours for Film Book. Well, now in March, we have a documentary film book. Our students created documentaries, um working with Drew University and Cinema Ed. And guess what? The film will be screened at Soapak. So that's why we have the picture there. And so um you will receive an invitation to that. It will be on Eventbrite shortly, so that anyone can register. We we got, they put us in the third floor. It has a capacity of a hundred and forty-five, and we want to fill it. Okay? So I think that's a picture, that's it.
Oh, no, this is a big one.
Oh, yeah, this is a big one.
Yes, yeah.
So for next school year, um we will stand up cosmetology two. It will be the first course in a three-course sequence to prepare our students for state licensing. And so we do intend to submit an application to the state to have this approved as a new program of study at the high school. We, you know, working with Dr. Dr. Fitzhugh and and uh Mr. Ballard and all of the, and the board as well. We uh will be outfitting a classroom at the high school. And so you will feel as though you've just walked into a salon. And those students will begin the first course. It will be, you know, a process to uh be admitted to this program. But it's going to be a dynamite program, and if all goes well, our students at the end of the three years will walk out licensed. So, as you can see, CTE programs at OECD prepares our students for college and career success. Thank you.
So as you know, we do a um, we do a few um facilities updates each month. And so we just want to make sure that folks know exactly what is occurring in terms of our building, um facilities across the district. Mr. Vasquez.
Good afternoon, this is a quick update on what we've done in the month of January. It seems so far away, cause we're about to hit Fed, we're about to hit March. So within the two months, we've done a lot of work throughout the district. So a quick update, I meet with the custodial staff every morning at the warehouse to give them the updates on the COVID, to make sure that we're still doing our COVID cleaning, flu cleaning, just our everyday disinfecting. The superintendent sent me a link today for some more PPE equipment, which I applied for. So we're still applying for PPE for gloves, masks, hand sanitizers. So that's still ongoing. I know it's not as wide as it was during the whole pandemic, but we still take precaution to make sure that we're still meeting our mandates and making sure our schools are safe. There's a facility update, we still got projects going on as um January, we're getting ready for the winter month for the storm, the ice. We're working on the Rosa Parks Boiler Room, installing three new boilers, which this slide is older than I'm gonna show, but that job is ninety-nine percent complete, which is waiting for our final inspection and so they can turn the boiler system over to us. We're dealing with um, since we do have new boilers from Forest, Oakwood, STEM, we have older buildings, so our pipes are taking a little beating. So the pipes are needfully repaired, the team and I, we're out there making sure we're repairing the pipes and to ensure that our system is going properly. Um over at the high school, the new addition, we had some issues with the sewage and the new addition in the restrooms, that's been an ongoing problem. This was truly uh an effort through everybody, from the superintendent, the BA, the assistant BA, the SDA, terminal construction, the city, to get this problem fixed, and over the break, it was resolved. So we'll show some pictures of what it looked like. I don't have the updated pictures, we were over the break, but we had the, we had construction crews out there on Claritin ripping up the street to fix our issue. And over at STEM, we did some minor roof repairs, that's ongoing. We do have older roofs, so we are in the process of getting quotes and stuff to repair our roof. Just a photo of the guys out there getting ready for the winter months, getting, you know, getting the saw. We always plan for the worst, hoping for the best. I think I, I know the guys did a great job. We were out there all night, making sure that we were clearing the snow, making sure we were out there on ice watch to prevent any slips and falls. It was, these are the months that we, you know, we earn our, we earn our living out there, and we make sure our schools are safe. As I, as I mentioned earlier, these are the pipes that are being, that we have to replace. If you see the picture on the left, they're older. We put new boilers, there's a picture from forestry school, it's a lot of wear and tear. You put a new system in there, a new boiler system. So we do, we are, we are out there, you know, spearheading when we have to replace some pipes. This is the minor roof repair that we did over at STEM. It really wasn't minor, we had a major leak that went into, I believe, that was room one oh nine. But the team and I were out there, we um fixed, we patched up the roof, fixed the the classroom and repaired the the wall. So kids came in, the teachers came in the next, uh Monday morning, and we knew the difference. Rosa Parks Community, this is the same, we installed the second boiler, but the third boiler was installed. So we have all three boilers up and running, new pipe, new pumps. This is a better picture, you see the new three boilers, these are new pumps, over the break, all the pipes were wrapped, all the labels were on. Again, we're just waiting for our final inspection for the contractor to hand over the system to us. This is the Orange High School sewage backup, and this is a nice picture. So every time we used the new restrooms, we used the restrooms of the new wing, it was just backing up into the building, into the new section. And again, that was a big effort, calling, you know, bothering the superintendent over break to help me get permits, the BA to get the SDA involved. We all got together, and the problem now was fixed. Monday morning, we came into the building. Kids didn't really realize, but the staff, the teachers were happy because they didn't have to walk across the building to use the restroom. And until today, everything's fixed, everything's working well. As I promised in the last board meeting, Cleveland Elementary School, that renovation project is on schedule. Again, these are all pictures, I was there during the break, and we had, the walls are going up. As you see, the walls are going up, now the grid, for the ceiling grids are going up, painting has begun. Um elevator shaft is being installed. New, the the boiler room is already installed, you can see some pictures of the classrooms here now. But next month, I'll show finished classrooms, they're painted, the grids are up, the ceilings are up. And again, we're moving, we're on course. And again, we're moving, we're on course. As the facility team, we, we still, we're monitoring the Bradley system. That's our work order system, where every day we're in the schools, we're doing our walkthroughs, um, assisting the head custodians and the building administrators to make sure their buildings are running properly. There are a lot of work orders out there as we go into the buildings. Again, it's fourteen buildings. We try to hit a building every day to knock off some of these work orders. But anything major, we address immediately. Again, the team and I, with Mr. Ballard, Mr. Zachary, superintendent meeting the S.D.A., Terminal Construction, to keep us updated on the progress of Cleveland, which is great, and, uh, finish up the, the high school punch list, which they're moving along. We will continue to notify the community. And I just want to thank the B.A., superintendent, Assistant B.A., for the support they give us every day to make sure these buildings are up and running.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez, for that comprehensive update. We're almost there, folks. I saw people in the audience yawning a little bit. I get it. I'm talking, so I'm not going to yawn yet. So, um, as you know, each month, we do give a given update on the attendance. And so I just want to share with you the following. Low chronic absences, zero to four point nine nine days. Modest chronic absences, five to six point nine nine days. Significant chronic absences, seven to eight point nine nine days. And finally, high chronic absences, nine days or more students being absent. So our largest chunk is where, folks? It's in the low chronic, right? Which is zero to four point nine nine days. All right, so the last slide that you will see does show that we are over the ninety-five percent for the month of January. All righty? So the, the majority of students are in the low chronic to modest chronic, um, areas of the template, right? And so do we have work to do with our, you know, attendance teams? Yes. So we're going to continue to do the blast. As Dr. Blanton always says, attendance matters, right? We need to make sure that children are learning every single day. The blasts are going out at ten o'clock in the morning to estimate if a student is either, is, um, absent from school. So it gives the parent the information to know if their child is sitting in front of certificate and staff numbers. All righty? So I will put a plug here. If you have not updated your information in the Genesis Parent Portal, you have to do it because this information is critical for you to get your children's grades on a continuum, as well as ensure they're in school every single day. This is a snapshot of the early childhood program, how the attendance looked in the month of January. So the initiatives that, um, the Office of Early Learning have put together, have, have, um, assisted with the attendance throughout the district. But we are still pushing because we want the parents to understand that even though it's pre-kindergarten, pre-kindergarten is critical developmentally for our children. All righty? So we do need our students in school regardless of their grade level configuration. The next is kindergarten through grade seven. So you have the opportunity to see exactly how our students are doing holistically. Our high school level. Kids want to be in school, right? And this slide gives you the grade level configuration, though they were on the other slides, but in one pocket here. So again, we see in a lot of students in the low chronic absences realm. And when we see students that are in the significant or high chronic, we are making those phone calls, we're meeting with them, so on and so forth. We did establish a bilingual outreach, um, group. This is part of their charge too, for those students outside of the attendance committees that we have at school levels as well. This final slide shows the district average daily attendance rate. So we only have one dip, which was on January sixteenth. But other than that, we were very good in terms of ensuring that students were in school every single day. Good? All righty. So again, please remember to follow us on our social media handles, um, Orange, I'm sorry, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. Again, it gives you some up-to-date information on a continuum here in our district further. If you have not signed up for the Orange app, please make sure you do as such. It comes right to your phone. The emergency pop-ups that we put up, or some of the news stories that Mrs. Draper, um, our new communications officer is placing on the website. Again, we're giving you information and engagement on a daily basis. With that being said, Board President, Board Vice President, board members, that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Fitzhugh. Now we're going to do board minutes. Can I get a motion to approve January two thousand twenty-four reorganization minutes? January third, I'm sorry.
There's been a motion to approve the January third, two thousand twenty-four reorganization minutes by Mrs. Sharif, and it's been properly seconded by Mr. Wingfield. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
Can I get a motion to approve January tenth public meetings?
There's been a motion to approve the January tenth, two thousand twenty-four public meeting minutes by Mr. Wingfield, and it's been properly seconded by Mr. Sharif. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
Can I get a motion to approve January tenth, two thousand twenty-four close minutes?
There's been a motion to approve the January tenth, two thousand twenty-four close minutes by Mr. Wingfield. It's been properly seconded by Dr. Turner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you. We will have, um, no committee reports. And can I get a motion to go into public comments? Do we have any public comments?
There's been a motion to go into public comment. It's been motioned by Mr. Sharif, and it was seconded by Mr. Wingfield, actually. Because Mr. Sharif was first, and then Mr. Wingfield was second. Right, thank you. Sharif, Wingfield. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? There are none, motion carried.
So you all were talking about the safety of children.
One second. Can you state your name and your address, please?
Ayesha Samuel, four zero one Highland Terrace in Orange.
Thank you.
And you guys were talking about the safety of students earlier. Um, on the day where you guys started two hours late, I forget which day that was. But I noticed that there was about maybe twenty students outside when I pulled out with my son at quarter to ten. And so what I was wondering is that if there was any way that instead of saying that kids can come at ten, like you all would have someone there, like security or something, to allow students who actually need a place to go during that time? Because it was freezing outside. And unfortunately, in this day and age, I'm not comfortable allowing students to sit in my car to wait until school opens. So there was about maybe twenty to thirty students in front of the Forest Street School in the freezing cold before they were allowed to be op, to go into the school because schools didn't open until ten o'clock. So I understand that school didn't open until ten, but somebody should have been there, like maybe at nine, to let those students who had nowhere else to go and couldn't be at home in.
That's correct.
So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. You said Forest, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Aleise Hilaire. I am here today advocating for mental health in schools, bringing awareness to informed that children in the United States are facing unprecedentedal mental health challenges like anxiety, depression, trauma, loneliness, and suicidality. In October of two thousand twenty-one, leading children's health organizations declared a national state of emergency regarding child mental health. And in December of two thousand twenty-one, the U.S. Surgeons General issued an advisory protecting youth and mental health, which precipitated to a wave of hearings in a legislation by Congress. Facts, half of mental health disorders show the first signs before a person's turning fourteen years old. Seventy-nine percent of mental health disorders emerge before the age of twenty-four. Close to twenty percent of all children aged three to seventeen in the United States struggle with mental, emotional, developmental, or behavioral disorders. In February of two thousand twenty-two, New Jersey, there are eighty-six thousand children with major depressive disorders, forty-two thousand of which do not receive the proper treatment. In two thousand twenty-one, suicide was the second most cost, cost of death among individuals ages ten to fourteen. Parents and educators are confronted with the increasingly complex mental health needs of children who are stressed out, anxious, depressed, and worse. Their needs are overwhelming educators who themselves are overworked, underpaid, and do not always have the training and support to adequately help children who are struggling. In response to this national crisis, Governor Murphy used, issued a plan inviting school districts to work with Rutgers University, um, excuse me, Rutgers University Center for Comprehensive Mental Health to effectively identify and address students' mental health needs. So my questions to you are, when you receive your weekly reports from the New Jersey Department of Education, did they fail to inform you about the requirements of when and how to apply? Can you please elaborate to the public why the Orange School District was unable to participate in the program directed by the Board of Educ, of New Jersey? Did the Orange School District receive mental health funds to be allocated? If so, what, what is the amount, and how did the district make use of those funds? And please elaborate on what the current mental health practices are to parents so they can be informed. I requested for the trauma-informed team to be present here because I want to know why they have not made recommendations for the schools to be trauma-informed. Trauma-informed does not mean you have to be trauma expert. It means having an understanding and knowledge that when kids are acting out, they are acting out their emotional needs. So when, so the job of the schools and the parents are to be educated on the emotional needs of the child, so we as a collective can respond to the need not to suppress their behaviors.
Thank you. I don't mean it, hello, hello, I don't, hello.
We're nurturing adults, and it is our job to work.
Ma'am, I have to stop you. Your three minutes are up. Thank you. We did take out all your questions, and someone will be addressing you. If you can give us your email, and you'll come around, get your email and your phone number.
I want it addressed in public, so it's on record. I don't want someone reaching out to me because parents need to know.
We'll have all your answers, your questions answered in the next board meeting. Sure, no problem. Thank you. Do we have any more?
So just so, I just have to be very transparent. The, um, the team, I have to ask them because it's after contractual time. So I just have to make sure that they're obligations, but I will reach out. These are already going to be, I already know in my mind what's going to happen. Yep.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comments?
Where is she? She outside?
No more? Can I get a motion to close public comments?
There's been a motion to close public comment by, uh, Mr. Sharif, and it's been properly seconded by Dr. Turner. There's been a motion to close public comment by Dr. Turner, and it's been properly seconded by Mrs. Sharif. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried, public comments closed.
Thank you. Can I get a consent agenda to approve? H through, I just didn't want to do a consent agenda with H.I.B. cases and out-of-district placements.
There's been a consent agenda, I'm sorry, there's been a motion to approve a consent agenda for items H all the way through the H.I.B. cases, and it's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Going to do a roll call vote. Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Wingfield?
Yes, but I have staying from anything dealing with Montclair State University.
Vice President Gravesandy?
Yes, to all items except anything to deal with Jeremy Gravesandy.
Mr. Sharif?
Yes.
Last but not least, Board President Johnson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Scheduled meetings are as follows. Public Relation Committee virtual meeting, March sixth, Wednesday, March sixth, two thousand twenty-four, at four forty-five. Orange Bo, Board of Education Public Board Meeting will be Wednesday, April the tenth, two thousand twenty-four. We chose not to do a March meeting because today is February, and it does not make sense for us to do a meeting nine days later. Closed meetings, Curriculum Committee virtual meeting, Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, two thousand, no. Okay, February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at three thirty P.M. Facilities Committee virtual meeting, Monday, March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at three thirty P.M. Special Educational Virtual Meeting, Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand twenty-four, at three thirty P.M. Policy Committee virtual meeting, Thursday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at four P.M. Finance Committee virtual meeting, Thursday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty P.M. Human Resources Committee virtual meeting, Monday, March eleventh, at two, two thousand twenty-four, at four P.M. We have any board comment, I mean, I'm sorry. We are going to go into board comments. Mr. Tarver? Ms. Turn, Dr. Turner?
Um, I just want to come in, um, Sir Tito over there. You are beyond impressive. Um, even if you were saying, um, your A.B.C. is just your presence, it is, is, um, powerful. The way that you control your reading and, and give an eye contact to your audience is, is impressive. And in addition, the things that you're, you're, the content that you're presenting is, is extremely helpful. And as a mental health professional, um, I see greatness in you. And so I want to encourage you to continue the good work, um, and be a mentor and a leader, not just to your peers, but to us all.
Thank you.
Mr. Wingfield?
It's a testament, Tito, to your mom and dad. Thank you for, thank you, mom and dad. Uh, and also I want to say, uh, Dr. Appatira, thank you for the C.T.E. program. Shout-outs, I love it, keep it up. And I look. Shout out, I love it, keep it up, and I look forward to seeing what's gonna happen for twenty-four K. Thank you.
Vice President Gravesandy? Um, Ms. Crockett? Siaka? I just want to thank our teams because, I just want to thank our teams because without them, there is no us. Our team, teams have been working tirelessly, their day on, day off, they're during the break. So I do want to commend Dr. Fitzhugh, you and your staff, Mr. Cortez, Jason, Mr. Ballard, Lamont, Zachary. Lamont, you have really, really been a shining star in visioning in this work that has been, been going on. I do. No disrespect to you, Mr. Ballard, but it's time for Lamont to shine and he is shining like a diamond. So I do want to thank you for actually stepping up and doing a great work and informing us and actually bringing us up to the twenty-first century because we were so antiquated, it is ridiculous. But thank you, thank you, thank you. Dr. Fitzhugh, thank you for being the wonderful superintendent that you are. You still don't listen, I want this to go on record, but you do need to listen because your family needs you. We need you too, but they need you more because at any given day, we're all replaceable. And we, there's nothing that we can say to your family because you go so hard for this district. Um, thank you to the EDs because you guys, without you guys, none of this is possible at all. Dr. Blanton, Ms. Harris, Ms. Harper, Ms. Acutera, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mrs. Scatari too, thank you, thank you, thank you for all of the hard work that you're doing. Ms. Harper, I'm very, very happy about the special education, uh, piece that we have just, um, put. We do want families to reach out if they need help. Um, what is it, reopening the schools, if you have any concerns, please email them because we want to get to the bottom of it. Can I get a motion to close?
There's been a motion by Dr. Turner to close, it's been properly seconded by Board Vice President Gravesandy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstentions? Hearing none, motion carried. Have a great night, everyone.
Good night.